Call the meeting to order. I invite you to join with me in the invocation. Dear Lord, in a time of year where we are so grateful for all that we have, let us remember those that are less fortunate. Give them the gifts we often take for granted. For the families that have lost loved ones during a difficult year, we pray for peace and comfort. Show them the way to move forward. For those that are sick, we ask for healing. We pray for the world and the leaders that make difficult decisions in a time of confusion and disagreement. Show us the way to come together in unity, to make decisions that are best for all of the people. When we celebrate the joy of this season, let us remember all that the Lord has given to us. We pray in your holy name, amen.
You're having feedback. I think it's Ronnie, I think.
Oh, mine's all. You see your speaker cut, put X it out?
You know, we shouldn't have to do this.
Thank you.
We should not have to do this. This should be something that's taken care of.
Moving on to number four, approval of the minutes, approval of minutes for the November seventeenth, twenty twenty-five regular session. So, move. Motion by Councilmember Dry, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next is a public hearing to consider Resolution twenty-five, twenty-nine, approving the economic development incentives for Project Shag. First, I will ask staff to introduce, and then I'll allow anyone who cares to speak for or against to come forward. If you do speak for or against, you will be allowed three minutes and a thirty minutes maximum for each side.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Michael, Mayor Pro Tim Hall, and mayors, members of city council. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight regarding an economic development incentive request for Project Shag. This is an existing Albemarle industry proposing a significant reinvestment in their local operations. Project Shag plans to add thirteen new full-time jobs over the next eight years and will invest a minimum of nine million fifty-eight thousand dollars in new taxable equipment at their Albemarle facility. This expansion in their product line supports the company's long-term growth and strengthens Albemarle's advanced manufacturing sector. In accordance with North Carolina general statutes, the city may offer a performance-based economic development incentive to support projects that create jobs and increase the tax base. Based on the projected investment and the job creation, the incentive under consideration this evening is estimated at two-hundred-and-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars over an eight-year period. The project is projected to generate an estimated net revenue of two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-two dollars to the city during that same timeframe. The incentive is performance-based. Should the company's job creation or investment levels fall below the commitments outlined, the incentive amount would be reduced proportionately. As required by statute, public notice of this hearing was published in this, in the paper on November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And tonight, I respectfully request that council consider approving the resolution before you, which authorizes the city to enter into an incentive agreement contingent on Project Shag, meeting the job creation and investment levels described. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions? Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearings. So, move. Second. Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Move approval of Resolution twenty-five, twenty-nine.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to approve Resolution twenty-five, twenty-nine, second by Councilmember Hughes, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
I have no announced or unannounced delegations. Move to administrative reports. And the first is a code enforcement update. Mr. Rhodes, you have any comments?
Uh, no, other than I've counsel recalls, uh, a few months back, uh, code enforcement was moved from our Planning and Development Department to our Police Department. Uh, since that time, we have hired a code enforcement, um, officer and also a assistant code enforcement officer. Um, Chief Manley is here to present the ninety-day update for this, uh, program that has been moved to the Police Department.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager Rhodes. I'm here today to provide an update on the activities and progress from the City of Albemarle's code enforcement team over the last three months. Our mission remains clear, to preserve and enhance the health, safety, and welfare of our community. Our work is not done alone, and we rely on several of our governmental partners. We collaborate closely with the Albemarle Fire Department's Fire Marshal's Office and the Stanley County Building Inspectors. Together, we ensure that properties are safe, maintained, and compliant to city and state standards. Code enforcement addresses new, excuse me, code enforcement addresses nuisances, code violations, and responds to public complaints. We use a range of enforcement tools such as warning notices, notices of violations, and hearings to achieve compliance. Our goal is always voluntary compliance first, but we are committed to the safety and welfare of our community, and we'll see the process through. Residents have several ways that they can report issues. The first one is the Albemarle Police, or excuse me, the albemarlenc.gov website backslash code enforcement. And when they do that, they are put into two categories. Those categories are code violations, such as unsafe structures, utilities, and the infestations. Or the nuisance violations, such as overgrown weeds, junk vehicles, and graffiti. In the past three months, we have received one-hundred-and-sixteen complaints. Thirty-seven of those were code violations, and seventy-nine of those were nuisance violations. And as you can see, our top three issues in the community are tall grass, junky properties and vehicles, and abandoned structures. So what have we done in response to those complaints? We have taken down one-hundred-and-ninety illegally signs, or excuse me, one-hundred-and-ninety illegally posted signs. We have issued one-hundred-and-sixteen warnings. We have issued eighty-three notices of violation, and we have scheduled twelve notices of hearings. So we have made significant progress since our last update to council. Three demolitions that we have been able to initiate by, by the owners themselves is at seven-thirty-one Dr. Martin Luther King Drive, twelve-thirty-one East Main Street, and nine-on-one Concord Road. As we work with property owners, this is an example of a renovation underway at five-twenty-two West Main Street. This was all initiated by the, the owner after the complaint. We have had several examples of voluntary compliance as it relates to nuisance violations. Twelve-thirty-two South First Street, one-twenty-six North Fourth Street, and ten-seventy-three Lundick Street is an example of how the, the property owner is actually asking our assistance for them to be voluntarily compliant. We also are working with property owners at four-four-three Colson Street, six-twenty-four South Center Street, and four-thirty-five Watts Street to assist them with demolition or demolishing those properties. So where we have initiated violations and have taken action, eleven-ten Concord Road, as you can see the before and after. And I know that the council has been interested in two-thirty West North Street. Uh, and an update on that is we have a hearing scheduled for December tenth. I also want to provide an update on three-hundred South First Street, the heart of Albemarle. The graffiti has been covered, the stagnant water has been removed, and the property owner has indicated renovations will begin June first. But we will continue to enforce on that property.
June first of twenty-six?
Yes, ma'am. So, steps that we have taken to make sure that it continues to move forward. We have sent a certified letter and posted a notice of hearing on the property November twenty-sixth. We have a hearing scheduled for December fifteenth. And at this hearing, the code enforcement team will determine the specific repairs and improvements that are required according to our ordinances.
So hang tight, which property is that?
That's the heart of Albemarle, so.
Okay, so I just heard that, so they have said they're gonna do something in June, but this is where we are.
We are not wanting to let off the gas on this. We, we want to make sure that they're gonna be keeping up on the property and making sure that they're doing what they're supposed to. We will do a findings of fact in order and set reasonable timelines for the compliance. And if the compliance is not achieved, civil penalties and ultimately abatement will, will be seeked. This is a clear example of how our enforcement team balances giving property owners a fair opportunity to comply while protecting the community from the ongoing nuisance. Our goal is to work with the, the property owners to establish a clear path forward while ensuring that the health and safety of the surrounding community is paramount. It's important to note that enforcement takes time. For example, if a roof requires repair, we are required to give the owner ninety days, which means no demolition orders can, can be done. We can't take any action because we have to give them a reasonable opportunity to fix it. This process balances the, the protection of the private property owner with the city's responsibility to safeguard the community. Our team has been active and effective in addressing the complaints, securing voluntary compliance, and preparing for, for hearings. We, we remain committed to working with property owners, residents, and our partner agencies to make Albemarle safe, clean, and thriving. Thank you for, for your time, and I will now take any questions.
Chief, I'll just start by saying a great job. This is just another great example of, of your commitment to the city and your leadership ability. Um, you know, it's, uh, as we sit up, as we sit up here trying to recruit business and new residents, this is, this is, in my opinion, a very important area of opportunity for us is to clean the place up. And as you drive through downtown and getting that graffiti off the buildings and, you know, getting the, the tall grass removed, and, and those things are really important uh, when we look to attract new industry or residents. So congratulations, thank you so much. Uh, did I hear you say that you have a, a dedicated code enforcement officer? Is that someone that, that was within the Police Department already, or we bring someone else in?
So, the city manager Clark and assistant manager Rhodes, when he was there, decided that it would be best for the accountability and moving forward that, that team be moved under the Police Department. When they came over to us, we hit the ground running. Uh, we created an accountability system. We use a records management system to track our code enforcement. And then we have a metric to gauge whether they're doing what they're supposed to. Um, and in that meantime, we hired a full-time chief code enforcement officer, and then we hired a secondary, which, so now we have two.
Great, perfect, thank you.
Think this is a, a first step in the right direction in order to keep our residents informed as to what we are doing, not what we aren't doing. We have to ensure that the public is aware of what we're doing. I think we're gonna be going forward to every three months to have an update. Uh, the chief and I again had a chance to talk a little bit today is that things that would happen in between that that are either positive or negative needs to come before council and make the, our citizens aware of what we are continuing to do when we hit a stalemate. This has been a, an issue for a long time, and I'm happy to see that is, we're taking the initiative now to do what we're supposed to do, and that's to look after our citizens, provide them a safe place, provide Albemarle as being a, a clean and beautiful place to come in. But when you walk around and you see in the middle of downtown this stuff that has been lingering, um, it's a, a negative message. I hope that, starting today, that we will continue to keep the public aware and that we do our jobs to ensure that we inform you of things that are going on that may not come to your attention. Uh, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Do any of those properties qualify for controlled burn through the fire department?
So, the, there, there were three that the owners had, did reach out to us. We are working with the fire department on three properties to see if they do, um, fit in, into what we are allowed to do. And if they do, then we'll burn them to the ground.
Okay. The ninety days of grace period, if you will, uh, once you identify one of these properties, you give the property owner time to correct the issue or make a reasonable claim as to why they have it yet. Is that a state mandate timeframe, or is that the city?
That's the city ordinance. That's the city ordinance.
Further question?
Love it, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Moving to the municipal calendar, city council approved the twenty-twenty-six municipal calendar with a change of the meeting date, September the seventh, twenty-twenty-six, to Tuesday, September the eighth, twenty-twenty-six.
You want a motion?
I do.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Hall, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Moving to consent agenda, nine A, Resolution twenty-five, twenty-seven, schedule a public hearing for annexation of twenty-six point sixteen acres at the intersection of twenty-four, twenty-seven Bypass West and Judy Street. Nine B, Resolution twenty-five, twenty-eight, schedule a public hearing for annexation of forty-two fourteen acres along Sweet Home Church Road. Nine C, Ordinance twenty-five dash forty-four, City Hall Safety Improvements Project. And nine D, Ordinance twenty-five, forty-five, amending the physical year twenty-five, twenty-six operating budget.
Most approved, consent agenda, the second.
Motion by Councilmember Townsend to approve consent agenda, and the second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion.
Just one question, I know that nine B, there's been some issues about publication and notification in the past when it came to, um, other hearings. Is there enough time right now to do what needs to be done so that that will not be an issue before us in two weeks?
Ms. Burt, you want to address that?
I believe that the notice has been already set for the fifteenth in ample amount of time, but I will have to check with staff on that.
I just don't want that to happen again because I think that this is, this has been with, as I understand it, um, when it's come to planning and zoning, there have been a couple of times that it couldn't be heard because of notification, both the public notification and then notification of, um, owners of property nearby. So, just want to make sure that's done.
And just, just add to that point, I think there's been a, uh, I know there was a large, uh, a large amount of people at the last discussion here about that. So, I believe there's a, I believe they're gonna have a, will probably have a pretty good crowd at that meeting as well.
At what discussion come out, at the public here?
The.
At the planning and zoning?
Yeah.
Can we, uh, can we, is there anywhere we can go to the office and see what's going on with that, that safety thing? I, I'm just curious as to what we're doing.
Oh, if you want to see the plans, yeah, you can drop by and see about the plans.
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Uh-huh.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving down to new business. Central Atlanta Regional Council, twenty-twenty-six delegation. Currently, Ms. Hall serves as our delegate, and I believe Mr. Townsend is serving as an alternate. I think the recommendation is to reappoint both unless I hear otherwise.
So, move.
Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Uh-huh.
Those opposed, motion carries. Eleven B, the Transportation Advisory Board delegation. City council needs to delegate a city, city representative for the Transportation Advisory Board. Currently, that has been held by Chris Whitley, so we need to replace him.
So, what's the difference? I mean, I don't understand what this was. I don't, I mean, there was a RPO, but what's this? I don't understand what the Transportation Advisory Board is. Who is it?
I'm not aware of that.
I don't, I don't know about that.
I think this is the board that, and I may be wrong, that they hold meetings, have them scheduled every month, but they never hold them every month. I think there's one actually tomorrow at one o'clock. It's always on Zoom, and it just makes an advisory recommendation to the RPO.
This is a, a quarterly meeting. Steve Dutton, the SCUSA director, is who is over this. And I tried to get more direction from him, but was.
This is the SCUSA board.
Basically. This has had nothing to do with RPO, this is SCUSA.
With RPO.
So, they meet quarterly, February, May, August, November, at noon.
So it should not be, yeah, it should not be meeting tomorrow.
This is not, so is anyone who's interested in SCUSA appointment?
Yeah, this is, and if it meets once a month, once a quarter, but this has nothing to do with RPO. This is.
Anybody want to step forward?
If nobody else will do it, I'll do it because we've got to have somebody on there, but I wish that somebody else would, if it's just a Zoom meeting.
If it's once per quarter, I'll do it.
Thank you.
And I'm not gonna say that SCUSA for, I mean, Zoom for SCUSA.
Okay.
I don't know about that.
Because you were thinking this was RPO. Okay, and RPO sometimes meets in person, because I've done that for him.
There's a thought, we should have had SCUSA on here.
Need a motion?
All right, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Dexter.
Summit.
That's motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Hall, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Uh-huh.
Those opposed, motion carries.
So while you are talking about Mr. Whitley's appointments, was he not on some catalyst grant committee too as well?
We appointed him.
We've already taken you?
We met today.
We, okay, you've already, okay, very good.
Eleven C, Ordinance twenty-five, forty-three, Peddlers, and itinerant most merchant. Council, we have before you a complete review of our current process and what we would like to change for the new process. And if you have questions, I'm gonna ask Christine to address them. She's the one that put this together for us.
So this goes through city administration? This does not go through any other department?
So we used to do something very similar to this, and then we stopped it.
We still do it, but, but.
It just stopped coming before council?
Stop, we stopped, this stops it from coming before council.
Okay, all right.
If council's in a, in agreement, that I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Motion by Councilmember Dry.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Uh-huh.
Those opposed, motion carries. I'll move on to the city manager update, Mr. Rhodes.
Okay, I'm gonna go down to the podium and make an introduction of our new planning director. Mayor, city council, it is my pleasure to introduce our new planning director, Alicia Davis Stedman. Alicia comes with us, comes to us with. Alicia comes with us, comes to us with over 20 years of experience in urban planning and community development and strategic leadership. She's a former assistant planning director for the city of Charlotte, where she helped lead the Charlotte Future 2040 Comprehensive Plan. She played a key role in the community engagement and cross-departmental collaboration managing a $2.5 million budget and staff development. She has led initiatives to simplify development rules and align them with long-term community goals through Charlotte's Unified Development Ordinance. She most recently served as the marketing director and planning and research lead at NEOO Partners, focusing on inclusive urban development. She brings a strong track record in economic development, branding, and strategic planning, including work with Charlotte Center City Partners. I think just on a personal note, we're very fortunate to have Alicia join us. We really speaks to the city council's leadership in allowing us to recruit high-quality talent through our city. As you know, the planning director is a very important job, very important position, and we really look forward to having Alicia join our team, our leadership team. And with that, I will provide the podium to Alicia to provide a few comments.
Thank you, Darren, manager Rhodes, and good evening, mayor, members of council, and everyone joining us in person and virtually. I'm Alicia Davis Steadman, and I'm honored to serve as your new planning director for the city of Albemarle. Tonight, I just wanted to share a little bit about who I am beyond the resume. My roots are in the Mississippi Delta, and my heart has always been with people and community. One of my guiding principles comes from the honorable Shirley Chisholm. Service is the rent we pay for room on this earth. I try to live that every day. At my core, I believe planning is about people before projects. My values are simple: service, equity, transparency, and stewardship. My leadership style is collaborative and steady. I believe in setting a shared vision, being honest about our constraints, and then working side by side with staff, council, our boards and partners to move from ideas to action. I see this role as a responsibility to care for the places you love and the future we're building together. In these early days, my focus is on listening, learning, and observing, really understanding our priorities, our processes, and our people, so I can help outline a clear path forward. I already see some opportunities to build on Albemarle's strength, including supporting thoughtful growth by using Envision Albemarle as the blueprint for our development decisions and public investments, making our development processes more efficient, predictable, and transparent with a clear schedule for applications, public reviews, public notices, and decisions. I'm listening, I've been listening. Being a more collaborative partner with other departments and with our community organization. I believe good planning is done with community, not to community. Our lived experience is data. I want residents, business owners, owners, faith communities, and neighborhood groups to feel invited into the work that we do and to see their fingerprints on the plans and policies we advance. Over the next few weeks, I would love to schedule time with each of you individually or in groups to hear your thoughts on our current initiatives, especially the comp plan. I want to understand your priorities, your concerns, and where you see opportunities for us to collaborate to make Albemarle a place people live, love to live for generations to come. Thank you all for the warm welcome, all my teammates, and I look forward to working with you.
Welcome, welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Mr. Rhodes, you have further?
That's all I have.
Anything else come before council?
I do have a couple of things, if I may, your honor. I'll mark off the catalyst grant since, thank you for reminding me of that. Last week, week before last, I attended the National League of Cities meeting as a representative of the North Carolina League of Municipalities, and it was real interesting to know that they had different threads that were offered at this conference. And one of them was on homelessness, which leads me to, is it on next meeting, the second reading? The second reading on the, uh-huh, we approved it, completely approved it. I couldn't remember if we had a second reading or not. Which leads me to the urban camping that was approved, realizing that homelessness is an issue that's not just here, and it's not just in big cities, it's everywhere. It's in Norwood, it's in Stanfield, it's in Locust, it's in Albemarle, it's in San Francisco, it's everywhere. But the bottom issue with homelessness is not about people not having a place to live, it really gets down to housing. And it's not, I mean, you know, it's a housing issue, but there were a lot of issues on that, and I brought back all kinds of information, and I will pass it over to you there. But I sent to each of you all, today I believe, a video of how the city of Greenville dealt with their urban camping. And I urge you to read what the city of Greenville, South Carolina, has done and is doing with their urban camping. Yeah, we can make all these rules and all that kind of thing, but until we get behind what are we going to offer the group of folks who are actually homeless and encouraging and making and providing for folks to come together? And I think we do that, and we were the, we were the push behind that group getting together about 18 months ago for the first time, and I think from that push, they're getting together about every quarter. But we just cannot make an ordinance and just, and not do anything else. So I just urge you to really think about going back to services, the rent that we pay, okay? People can't really serve if they don't have a place to live, so just think about on that. The second thread that was part of the National League was a thread of strategic planning, and I just, I say congratulations to the city that we do that. But it was real interesting that every session that I attended dealing with strategic planning, working with community, not talking to community, I love that, what you just said, was using citizens, and we do that. But the group of citizens that we don't use, that I would say that we need to continue to use, is our youth. Because we are going to continue to have our children and our young folks, and I see some young folks in the group out here who went off to school but came back and are living here and calling this, and calling Albemarle home. But we're going to lose folks unless we ask them to be a part of what our strategic plan is. So I just would offer that to you today. And the last thing is, and I, all of us know that the charters of freedom sit right on Second Street. I've had three people in the last seven days come to me and say, they look horrible. Some of us remember how hard it was to get the charters of freedom in Albemarle, but when they were put together, they, they have not been kept up, and there's moisture getting in them, and they're just getting nasty. So I just offer that because we need to be proud of our charters of freedom that we worked hard to get out front. And lastly, I don't know, and if I did, I missed it. Britt, do we have an update on all of those hearings over at public housing? Did they occur, just to, no?
I am not sure. I would have to defer to Renee for hearing at public housing. I'm not sure.
Did I just, in the next meeting, I'd like for somebody, thank you, for somebody to give us an update on that, on what happened with all of those. I think we had six or eight or 10 hearings to be taking place.
Are you talking about the eviction?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I do believe all of them went pretty successfully, and a couple of them were up for writs, and I am not sure, since I was out last week, what happened with those two or three, but those did happen as scheduled, and I think they went fine.
Very good, very good. I wanted to make sure that that, because that was our first stab at that. Thank you.
Anything else come before council? I'll entertain a motion. We're going to close session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811, A3, 4, 5, and 6 for consult with attorney, economic development, real estate, and personnel. As is another condition of that motion, I want to add that we excuse council member Bramlett and council member Hughes from the discussion on economic development. Now, I'll entertain, motion by council member Aldridge, second by council member Hunt, further discussion?
I'd ask why we are doing, why we feel like we need to do that if, well, I under, I mean, I understand, but it's, it's my understanding that this is not, I would just, I don't believe they need to be excused because I don't believe that the entity that might be coming before us, it's an entity thing. I think it's an organization versus an entity. And then when we get in there, I will.
I'll explain it back there.
Starting out with that?
Yes, that's the first thing. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion carries.